It's called my hand is what it's called. All right. Thank you very much for coming to our special meeting tonight of whatever day this is. It's not on here. Anyway, it's Wednesday. January 29, 1919. This is a carryover from my -- you should have been here last night. I was really struggling. 2025, and I just wish it was the, you know, because I was younger. I was, I have a request. Before we start the meeting, I have a request. Who among you got the flyer for Point View and Smith Fly? Just a show of hands. Oh, that's okay. All right, thank you. All right, that was great. All right, that was my thing I said I would do. All right. So I've called a beating the order. Let us do our pledge of allegiance.
All right. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. Oh, yeah, there, okay. We'll call, please.
Councilmember Carter.
Present.
Councilmember No.
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gottberg.
Here.
Mayor Clorici.
Here. Thank you. All right. Do we have any announcements by or presentations besides the ones we're going to see to the public? Any announcements from my brethren? No, thank you. Besides, thank you very much for coming to our meeting. Can I get an adoption of our agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
I will second.
I'm a merchant of second, all in favor.
Aye.
Sure that that was done unanimously, please. Oh, I should have taken public comment. It's, whatever. Adoption of the agenda, let's see. Discussion items, okay, this is why we're here. Received presentation from the El Dorado County Resource Conservation District regarding the community wildfire resiliency strategy in the city of Placerville, and I'm supposed to hand this off to Juliana Prosperi. And there she is.
All right, good evening, everyone. Hello, everyone on City Council, staff, and everyone here in the public. This is very exciting. There's lots of folks here tonight. My name is Juliana Prosperi. I work at a firm called WSP. I live up in South Lake Tahoe, so I am a resident of the county. We've done a lot of wildfire resiliency planning with the county and now El Dorado RCD and working with the city over the last few years, most recently on this particular plan. So excited to be here tonight. We're kind of in our final phases of getting close to the finish line of wrapping up this plan. We've had a series of meetings, and so tonight we're just going to kind of provide another overview for all of you on the wildfire resiliency strategy and kind of get into a little bit of what it is, why it's important. Nick's going to provide a little overview of our wildfire risk assessment as well as the wildfire hazard assessment, and then we're going to start to talk about some of the projects, which are going to be comprised of, you know, land use tools, planning tools, outreach and education programs, but most specifically some of the fuels treatment projects or landscape treatments that we're proposing that are important to get in place across our planning area. And then I'll talk about the strategy organization and then wrap up with some information on the schedule and next steps. Can everyone hear me okay? Let me know if I'm not speaking into this speaker. So I introduced myself. So again, we're with WSP as shown on this slide. There's several other folks from our team that have been very instrumental in helping pull together this plan and complete the analysis and sort of make sure some of the projects, recommendations we've included in what you'll eventually see in the action plan align and build upon some of the previous planning efforts going on in the county within the city and then at El Dorado County RCD or Resource Conservation District. So just want to acknowledge a few folks are in the back room. Melissa Baum's going to take notes in the back corner. They've been helpful on a lot of the different projects we've helped support over the last couple of years in this community. And then some of the others are listed here. Also tonight, you'll hear from Nick Miley, who's with Spatial Informatics Group. He's one of our teaming partners. They're very helpful and the drivers behind the entire risk assessment that he'll share a little bit about. That's kind of the technical part of the presentation. And then Chris Dietz in the back right corner in the navy blue sweatshirt, just sorry to put you on the spot, but he's with Wildfire Services Group, and they've helped also really ground truth and also go out onsite. They do a lot of fuels treatment projects across Sierra Nevada and the Auburn area, Placer County, and just make sure that all these places we're proposing areas for treatment really makes sense and are needed based on fuel loads and helping us kind of understand what the costs and timelines would be associated with those. Some of my little notes are going to pop up on my screen the way we're sharing this. And then last but not least, Courtney Jackson, many of you probably know that's helped, you know, pull all this together and make sure that we had good turnout and participation tonight is in the back. And then you'll hear from Mark Egbert, who's also sort of our leader behind this important plan. So next, I'll chat about the actual wildfire resiliency strategy overview and what it is. So this is intended to be a comprehensive, community-specific plan. It's designed to identify and guide various wildfire preparedness and wildfire mitigation actions, also inform how we do the risk analysis. So that's the wildfire hazard and the wildfire risk analysis or assessment, and then help us guide what type of mitigation projects we want to include in this action plan. So it's kind of like a long-term action plan that's going to include a suite of different types of projects that will address specifically wildfire hazards in the community. The planning process itself has been a very much an inter-agency and collaborative process among various stakeholders, the general public, our decision-makers, and just really the whole community. So it's just taking on kind of the whole community approach as far as the planning process goes. One of the key pieces of this, this plan that I think makes it different or unique than other plans, it's very similar to Community Wildfire Protection Plan, but it provides a nice model for wildfire risk mitigation for the city of Placerville, but also this sort of this region. Sorry about these things popping up. So that's really helpful so other communities can take sort of this, the framework that's been provided in this strategy and hopefully be able to use it in their community as an example of just like best practices of wildfire mitigation. And in summary, it's a guiding document for wildfire prevention and mitigation activities in and around the Placerville area. So just not specifically just the city center and the city, the area within the city limits, but as you'll see shortly and on our maps around the room here, it includes the whole sort of area around the city limits that, you know, has very high fire risk, fuel loads, and potential for wildfire. So that's why we're looking at a larger area. So this, this is a little bit about the purpose of the wildfire resiliency strategy. One of the key pieces I want to start with is, you know, this effort has been designed to take into account that there's a lot of other plans and, and programs out there at the county and city level already that address wildfire hazards in our community. So this is really intended to build upon some of the efforts going on at the county, specifically with their recent general plan safety element update, which has wildfire hazards in there as one of their key hazard concerns. Their hazard mitigation plan, which included the city of Placerville, had an annex that included wildfire strategy. So it's really a template that we're building upon and then serving as a future wildfire planning template. So again, something, you know, a plan specific to the wildfire hazards while those other plans address a lot of other natural hazards within our community. The ten of this plan is to make sure it enhances wildfire preparedness and resiliency around the community. It's also intended to be realistic and strategic in the sense that it's identifying projects in sort of a short-term, medium-term, and long-term timeframe in terms of helping the city and El Dorado RCD actually get funding for these projects. And they're all designed to be projects that are reducing fire hazards and fuel reductions or vegetative fuel buildup in and around the community. And lastly, it's designed to be a plan that helps different agencies, not just the city and El Dorado RCD, but also even the county to prioritize fuels treatments, home hardening programs, and then other public education all around the importance of wildfire prevention and fuels reduction. So now I'm going to pass it over to Mark. They've been really helpful in sort of leading this, and he's going to talk a little bit about why El Dorado RCD is working together with the city, just around some of their recent successes with fuels reduction projects.
Hello, and thank you for, for the opportunity to present the workshop. The, this, I was on Park Creek or actually Mormon Immigrant Trail, and I got a call from the Sierra Nevada Conservancy representative, and it was while Cal Door was happening, and they said, hey, I understand that they may be evacuating Placerville and South Lake Tahoe if they can't stop it right there on Sly Park Road. And what can we do to help protect Placerville? We need to throw some money at you to develop a strategy so that we don't lose Placerville. We understand that it's important. We understand that there's been really no comprehensive plan, and we'd like to be able to help you as much as possible. So they gave us $320,000 to develop a community wildfire resiliency strategy without us even knowing what we were going to do or even proposing for it. I thought that was really cool leadership from the Sierra Nevada Conservancy. But we were able to put together a really good team, and we were able to start from scratch. I have grown up in Placerville, went to El Dorado High School, my dad went to El Dorado High School, my kids all went to El Dorado High School. So I've lived in the community a long time, and I know how valuable it is, and I know how vulnerable it is. It's irreplaceable. You know, the things that we have here in our community, just if, you just, you know, can't imagine a paradise or an LA fire or anything that could happen to Placerville. And so when we started this project out, we wanted to do something that was like designing, I always put this in context, if you're going to be sailing across the Bering Sea, don't give me a sailboat that I use at Folsom Lake, you know? We can't fail when we are going up against these large-scale catastrophic fires that we are losing against. When you look at the King Fire, when you look at the Cal Door Fire, you know, we have been doing post-fire recovery for many, many, many years, and I don't like doing that type of work. So investing in community wildfire protection through strategies that build on community awareness, education, and some proposed resilient strategies with home hardening, defensible space, and fuels management is what's being proposed. It's dynamic. Nothing's fixed, nothing's set. It's something that we're going to work with moving forward with the city, with fire safe councils, and with the community. So I hope you get this, receive a lot of information that's going to be presented tonight. It's a lot. If you have questions, please let us know, and I really just appreciate the opportunity. I will say that this isn't the first community wildfire strategy at this scale that's gone on in El Dorado County. When the King Fire hit, Chief Pimlot called and said, I've spoken with the Forest Service and CAL FIRE, Sierra Pacific Industries, and they said we needed an entity to work across jurisdictional boundaries to get a large landscape fuels management project done, and they created Fire Adapted 50, which is the map that's right over there. We've approached over 10,000 acres on that project, and that did encounter the Cal Door on the south side of the, of Jenkinson Lake there, and it did have some beneficial results with those treatments being there. It allowed firefighter crews to get in and do their work, which is one of the primary objectives of this strategy. Another community wildfire protection strategy is in Georgetown. We're designing a 33-mile-long fuel break from the South Fork American River all the way up past Georgetown. That project is already in its, we've got 2,900 acres planned this year, so there's a lot of work being done, and these guys in the back can, or can attribute to that because they're the ones out there doing it. So these projects are beneficial in many ways, but they're not the end result. So I just wanted to say thank you and appreciate the opportunity.
So here's a little bit more about El Dorado RCD's role and some of the points that Mark just touched on. In addition to this, El Dorado RCD's role, I did want to point out, you know, potential role of the city of Placerville in, in terms of considering this plan for, for local adoption and implementation and the value of that, given it outlines a roadmap of all the different wildfire prevention and mitigation activities that the city, in collaboration with the county and El Dorado RCD and some of the fire safe councils, can take on moving forward. It's also an opportunity as a plan for El Dorado RCD and the city to partner together on those different projects as they, as we've listed them, selected them, and then prioritized them. We're hoping to get input from everyone tonight on some of the projects that Nick will be going over. They're really all intended to enhance forest health, increase fire resiliency, and then there's also a unique part of this plan that we'll touch on that's also going to entail explaining to you all like what some of the environmental benefits or carbon sequestration treatment benefits involve with actually treating these different areas and around the Placerville area. And then lastly, it's just an opportunity for the city to partner with some of these other organizations and entities just around community wildfire resiliency work. So here are just, on the right are just some of the other plans. This is just an example of one plan. It's El Dorado County's Hazard Mitigation Plan. We recently just helped the county wrap this up at the end of last year, and so the city of Placerville did have a local hazard mitigation plan annexed to that county plan, and that also has several different wildfire mitigation projects included in it. It also included a wildfire evacuation study. And then addition to that, there recently was, I think about a year ago, it wrapped up in last May, was the Greater Placerville Wildfire Evacuation Preparedness and Resiliency Study. So that also looked at a same, the same project area that we covered in our plan, but with a focus around transportation evacuation routes and improvements and recommendations that can be put in place around areas where there's increased wildfire risk. So our, our study area is shown on this map as well as all the different maps you see, with exception of the one in the back right-hand corner of the Fire Adapted 50 project, but it encompasses approximately 80,000 acres, consists of the city, as well as the surrounding communities around Placerville like Cold Springs, Pollock Pines, Camino, and to the south, Diamond Springs. This again is the same as that, that previous report I just mentioned, the Greater Placerville Wildfire Evacuation Preparedness Study. Again, this is just another point. We're trying to build off of these previous plans and studies and not repeat or duplicate them. So again, the risk assessment, the study area, it's all very much the same. The focus of this plan was a little different in that we're, we looked very specifically at where and how we should do fuels treatment projects. And then again, the focus, again, on just looking beyond the city limits of Placerville. As you can see, there's a much larger area around Placerville that's at risk to wildfire hazards. In a previous meeting, we actually showed all the different recent fire perimeters or boundaries, and they all come up around this boundary of this study area. And it's really the core of Placerville is not seeing a major wildfire right around that core area. So we've been really lucky, but all those recent fires, Cal Door Fire, Mosquito Fire, as you know, have come very, very close to this boundary you're, you're seeing on this map. So it is a very important and special place we want to protect, and again, that's why that's a little larger of a, a planning area than just the city limits. So one of the key things I keep mentioning is, is plan alignment. So here you see all the different examples of the other plans, programs that have been in place over the last four or five years or recently have been updated. Starting with the top, I mentioned the county's Hazard Mitigation Plan update was adopted and finalized last year. There was five participating jurisdictions, Cameron Park, El Dorado County Office of Education, City of Placerville, and Georgetown Divide Public Utility District, that all participated in that plan and have their own annex and suite of mitigation strategies. El Dorado County did a climate vulnerability assessment. They updated their general plan. El Dorado County Water Agency has their own programmatic watershed plan that includes wildfire strategies. CAL FIRE Fire Unit, Amador El Dorado Fire Unit, has their strategic fire plan. I mentioned the Greater Placerville Study. And then importantly, too, the county is currently updating the Western El Dorado County Community Wildfire Protection Plan. So as part of this effort, we've worked probably most closely with the county and their consultants in sharing data, you know, being able to understand how to align our planning processes, not to overwhelm you all with two plans that are being updated concurrently, but still trying to get the public involved and get feedback on the different focus areas of the two different plans. And then lastly, there's, you know, obviously the Fire Safe Council here in Placerville has their own community wildfire plan, and the county has a, a specific wildfire strategy. This is most of the plans that we've been working with to basically build upon as part of this effort. So maybe it's obvious, but I just wanted to highlight some of the, the key benefits of having a, a strategy like this. Again, it improves coordination among all the different stakeholders, whether those are, you know, government, federal, state, local agencies, or some of our stakeholders have been from some of these other plans, actually nonprofit or community-based organizations. But it's bringing us all together and kind of the main goal to be better at an emergency response and wildfire prevention activities. It helps meet local management needs and figure out projects to mitigate community wildfire risk. It also helps when we come together, when we collaborate on different projects, it also increases our opportunity to get funding from federal or state sources for those different projects and kind of work together towards implementation. And then I think the other key piece is, you know, this helps, you know, be a plan that the community can define on where you think projects should occur based on your wildfire urban interface or WUI zone. So we've had a pretty specific planning process we've been following. It started with step one, as you can see here, which is develop a technical advisory committee, or we call that a TAC. That's been a bunch of different representatives and or members from the community that serve on different capacities with different federal, states, and local agencies. So US Forest Service staff's been there, BLM staff's have been at our meetings as they own some of the properties and lands within that study area or specifically around it. And as you know, most of our county consists of a lot of federal lands on the El Dorado National Forest. We've had state stakeholders from CAL FIRE and a lot of representation from our fire safe councils, as well as, as the city and folks from the El Dorado RCD. So once we had that group, they were sort of the guiding, you know, team to inform how we develop this process or this plan. And part of that include, develop, included developing a communication strategy, which I'll touch on in a minute here. And then step three, which includes a hazard and wildfire risk assessment, which Nick will talk about. And then step four is where we recently just come up with a list of potential future mitigation strategies, and I'll share a little bit about what those will look like later on, too. Step five, what we're working on right now, in addition to step six, and this is modeling the different environmental and emission-type benefits associated with some of the top fuel treatment projects. And then step six is really just pulling this all together in the actual plan, so you all have something to read. Right now, we have about half of the chapters on El Dorado RCD's website. There's going to be a few more added in the next week for you to check out. So this, the communication strategy involved a very, various different tools and touchpoints in time during our planning process and when we can go engage our stakeholders and our general public around, you know, the importance of this strategy itself. So a lot of that information was posted on the Placerville Wildfire Resiliency Strategy webpage. So if you want anything, you want to know anything about this strategy, that's kind of the hosting site or repository for all of our past meetings you may have missed, the current chapters of the plan, and it includes a lot of the maps you see shown around this room if you want to have a digital copy to look at and put in your bedroom. I'm just kidding. So there's also has been three specific stakeholder worksheet, workshops. We had a specific workshop with the Office of, the County Office of Wildfire Preparedness and Resilience, the South Fork American River Working Group. They have a cohesive wildfire plan that they're covering in that area. And then El Dorado County's GIS or Geographic Information Systems Team, just to collaborate on, collaborate on, and shared data sets that we're informing the CWPP update and then our strategy. We also had three public workshops. Those are shown here. This is the third and, and final workshop for this project. And then one of the other cool things that our project included, and a lot of projects have a survey of sorts. Ours was a community participation survey that was linked to basically a map so that all of you could go in and, you know, map out a polygon or a point, areas in the community where you felt like there was a need for a fuels reduction treatment project or something else, or maybe just areas where we needed to kind of go in and do road thinning, whatever it was as it related to wildfire risk reduction. That was a, a survey that was circulated at the, like, last fall, and we kind of had it lined up with our first public workshop so we could get folks to do it during our workshop. So a lot of input on that. And then we also just did a lot of other outreach with other planning efforts like the CWPP update, got out newspaper advertisements. And then Courtney and Mark from the RCD had over 92 different touchpoints, so short meetings, you know, community conversations with some of the other government agencies and organizations around this community. So that's, that's a lot of conversation around wildfire risk and increasing resiliency in the community. This is just a glimpse of what our community participation map looked like. We got help from Sig and Nick Miley's team in putting this together. I thought it was kind of neat, so a nice part of our project. With that, now I want to kind of transition into giving you a brief overview of, or introduction into the, the wildfire hazard risk approach. I kind of keep saying this, but we did want to really kind of hit home on the fact that we're building on all these other plans and programs that have been in place. So there are, just for your peace of mind, there's also other plans that are going to cover wildfire risk and, and projects outside of this project study area. And so we're building on what's already been done for the Placerville area, but this also takes into account like recognizing there's other plans for treatments outside the study area, just so you all know. And with this, again, we're just trying to integrate the different efforts together in one place. Every time we do update one of these plans or do a new strategy, we're integrating the latest publicly available data and wildfire planning and modeling tools. And you'll, you'll see a little bit of that when Nick goes through his presentation because there's a lot of neat, we just have a lot of data. It's, I think, the biggest asset now with these plans is there's a lot of maps and ways to actually visualize and see where these risky areas are and how they change, especially when a, a fire comes through and changes that vegetation and fuel loads and that, those habitats. But one of the other key things that's different, I think, in the way traditionally we did wildfire risk prioritization is this is, you know, a risk-informed process. We're looking at wildfire hazards at a scale that is really going to serve as a guide for what kind of treatment should happen in our study area. There's various different objective criteria. It's kind of shown on this little graphic right here from air quality, water security, forest resilience, carbon sequestration, fire dynamics, you know, what goes into a fire-adapted community that we've taken into consideration in our risk assessment and the modeling, and then all, then it, and also in around how we had conversations about the risk assessment in terms of like what, what types of inputs in the model should be prioritized or weighted a little more heavily than other criteria. So it was, it's really just focused around, you know, using all our best brains and subject matter experts that are in this community and getting that input and, and taking it into consideration to create like a whole better picture of how to go about, you know, where these treatments should be and making sure that at the end of the day, you know, we have better collaboration to ultimately result in better results and a better basis for decision-making. So with that, I am going to pass it over to Nick Miley from Spatial Informatics Group to provide a little more information on the actual wildfire risk assessment. Thank you.
Hey, everybody. Nick Miley here with Spatial Informatics Group. We did basically the big data crunch to make sure that all these different plans that Juliana and Mark talked about come in alignment and that we can not reinvent the wheel here, but use all the hard work that's been done before in the community, in the greater El Dorado County area to, to create smart and effective ways to treat fuels on the landscape to move the needle on the wildfire issue. And make no mistake that, you know, we've talked a lot about plans, we've had a lot of meetings, but this is the last step before we actually start getting the chainsaws running, getting the masticators out on the landscape. That is our goal here. We want to remove fuels from the landscape to shore up our homes, our businesses, and this Sierra Nevada that I think we all love, and that's why we live here. So with that, I'm going to throw a lot of data at you, but keep that in mind that this is all so that we can put smart treatments on the landscape and, and really move the needle here. So going to one of the plans that was conducted, the research that was conducted ahead of our work, they, in the, in the evacuation preparedness study, they looked at four likely wildfire scenarios that could enter the project area. You may be familiar with these, but the Chili Bar area is in the northwest quadrant of our project area, and we also have the Slab Creek. And we also have the Slab Creek, which is in the northeast quadrant. Down in the, in the southwest, you have Martinez Creek, and then Buck's Bar. And all these really speak to the problem that we're most concerned with, and that is a wildfire that gets out of control in the wildlands and hits the built environment with a full head of steam. And that's the real scenario that keeps us awake at night and what we're trying to address. You know, you don't want that to hit our homes, our businesses, when it's in the canopy. We want to get those on the ground where we can manage them. So all of our strategies are built around that idea that, you know, if we have a fire, we've seen this in Placerville, you know, we had the fire near In-N-Out Burger. We can respond to those pretty quick, pretty quickly. We got crews, we have access points, we can manage that. But when a fire comes into the built environment, like I said, a full head of steam, that is really concerning. And so we're building all of our responses around these types of scenarios. So addressing this problem is not like a one-size-fits-all sort of solution. We need to look at it holistically, and I kind of use this sort of generic castle metaphor that, you know, Placerville is our castle, the WUI, the, you know, is our, is our moat, and then we have this periphery area around that, that's, you know, kind of the cleared landscape that allows a defending army to kind of see the problem before it enters, you know, the close proximity to our fort. And so that's how we're building, building out our plan, is in these three treatment zones. And it's not enough to just treat one, and then the other, and the other. We want to treat these all sequentially, or at the same time, rather. And then we want to look at, we have lots of different treatment options, but we want to prioritize them into these treatment tiers. So we're looking at in the one-to-three-year tier, and then the three-to-five. And then when you get into the five-plus-year tier, you're looking at, in a lot of cases, you may have to do re-treatment. So some of the stuff that you worked on before will come back into, you know, your treatment set, and you'll have to look at that again. And so that really speaks to, this isn't a one-and-done kind of thing. We're, we're talking about creating a lifestyle around managing fire in the community, and that really is a way to structure that, that these things need to be done repeatedly. So keep that in mind. So we talked about the treatment zones, my, my fort or castle metaphor, but this is what that looks like on the landscape. So we kind of create a special definition for the WUI, given some of the constraints in our project area. And so you have the Placerville City Center in yellow there, and then your WUI is the purple, and then the periphery is everything else. So the WUI is basically if you have, you know, five dwellings per acre or, or less, you're kind of in that WUI zone, and then everything outside of that is your periphery. And so we're structuring everything around that to really insulate the core Placerville City center area. So we've talked a lot about existing plans and treatments. A big part of what me and my team did with the help of the RCD was getting all these data sets from a ton of different stakeholders in the community, whether it was CAL FIRE, the EID, or the RCD, or SMUD, and who all, PG&E, and several other, BLM, and several other people who have treatment plans either in the works, on the books, or have been completed. And as we discussed earlier, some that have been completed probably need to be re-treated depending on when they were conducted and how long ago. So we took all those massive data sets, and we're talking about hundreds and hundreds of lines of data, standardized it, vetted it as best as we could, and created this model to see where things were planned and what had been completed and what was active right now, and how we could tie our treatment plans into that, so that we could create continuity of these treatments along the landscape. And so you're seeing here, like, the red is the active, and the one that we use quite a lot in our plan is this one on the northern end of the, of the project area, and that is the, the SMUD transmission line corridor, and they're already doing work in there. And that is a really rugged part of the project areas, I'm sure you guys know, and it's a great way to tie in our projects and other people's projects to that as like a backbone that creates a buffer, you know, this first line of defense to protect, you know, the built environment that's structured around the 50 corridor. The blue stuff is mostly the Highway 50 fire adapted, 50 projects, but there's some other ones in there as well. And so you can kind of see that we have like a base foundation that we want to work within, instead of saying, oh, let's, you know, wipe the board clean and just come up with our own ideas. No, we want to work within the, the programs that have already been created and invested in and that people understand, and then build off that to create continuity. So to do that, there's a lot of layers, and I'm sure you guys have looked around here and seen these very busy maps. Some of them are kind of hard to understand admittedly, because there's so much information we're trying to convey through them. So one of the tools that we use is a suitability model to take layers of interest and put them, and essentially just line them up in a stack and see where there's the greatest overlap, and then target those areas for treatment, where we're checking a lot of boxes at once. So what we're showing you here is how our suitability model works. And in this case, we don't need to go deep in the weeds, but we put in criteria that would say, okay, we know it's very difficult to treat on very steep hillsides, so we want to eliminate that. There's certain lands that we know we probably aren't going to get access to, so we want to eliminate that. We want to highlight one-way-in, one-way-out communities or neighborhoods, because those are evacuation issue areas that we can address with fuel mitigation. And then we want to target areas that have really high flame length risk, because those are places that we're going to get fires, that will jump up into the canopy, it'd be more difficult to control. And then finally, that SMUD corridor that I showed you in red previously, we really wanted to emphasize that as a backbone to tie other treatments into. And then finally, we excluded defensible space from, you know, structured defensible space from the model, because, as Mark spoke to earlier, we have kind of three different ways we're doing this, addressing the wildfire risk. And one is really encouraging and trying to find funding for property owners like yourselves to do the work developing defensible space. As a big part of that, clearing along the roadways is another, and then these landscape-style treatments. And when you tie all those together, you really do get a great continuity in our treatment. So we've excluded that defensible space from our model. And what the model kicks out is these 24 treatment locations in the project area, and they're, the most suitable is in dark green and the least suitable in red. But least suitable is a little misleading. It's still a highly suitable location, just in our list. It has the least amount of overlap of all those metrics that I previously described, so. And then when we overlay that on our treatment zones, we can start to pick out locations where we want to prioritize treatment, treatments to check those different zones of interest. So you'll see that within the Placerville City Center, there's only one treatment location, and it's a very low suitability area. However, within that zone, it is the most suitable. So that's going to go right to the top for that, that zone. And you can do that throughout. Of course, there's some crossover where it crosses over in different zones, but we can go in here and pick out the best ones for each one of these to create that layered defense, if that makes sense. And one thing we should discuss now, because it'll come up later, is that the model misses stuff necessarily, because if we included everything, it would be so busy that we wouldn't have any priority treatments. So we actually went in here with our team, with Mark, with the wildfire services guys, with Juliana, and we drew in a few polygons that the model misses, and we'll go over why we did that later on in the presentation. So again, a very busy map here, but one of the, the key things that we wanted to highlight in the model was these evacuation concern areas, namely these one-way-in, one-way-out subdivisions. And those are outlined in red. And the model did a very good job at grabbing those. And so we, we know that we want to prioritize, some of these grabbed a couple of different neighborhoods and a single treatment that have evacuation issues. And a lot of them are on the periphery of the project area, which makes sense, because particularly on the north side, you're getting into those steeper slopes above the American River there and narrow roads. So that's, the model did a pretty, pretty good job there. Another thing that we actually didn't put into the model, but wanted to pay close attention that the model was catching, was these FEMA critical facilities and, and our schools, because, you know, you can't really have a functioning community without good schools, without our hospitals, without our communication network, and so on. And so we wanted to make sure that our treatment plan was insulating and protecting those, those areas. So you can see, we're kind of creating a cocoon around that Placerville City Center area, where the biggest concentration of critical facilities and schools are. So we discussed previously, you know, we have the landscape treatment, sort of prong of our treatment, our plan, and then we have our defensible space. And so what you're seeing here in the orange is the defensible space radii around all the building footprints in the project area. So if you look at the, the blowout box in the bottom right-hand corner, you're seeing the Patterson Lake HOA, and you can see how each one of those building footprints has a little radius around it. And, and the point of this map is simply that if everyone went and treated the 100 feet around their, their homes, you covered like a very large, I think it's something like 46% of the project area would be managed right there. And the other thing you're seeing here is that we put a 50-foot road buffer on all the roads in the project area, and that's much harder to see in this map, but that covers like another 10 or 12% of the project area. So if you just did those two things, we would, we'd have a pretty good handle on this problem. But if you add to it the treatments that we're proposing, which, it's because these maps are so busy, we just create circles where the treatments will be, you'll see they plug these gaps between the home hardening and the road network treatments. So this all kind of works together to create a more efficient holistic plan in the project area. And again, just showing the, the treatments here, where those circles were. So they really do fill that, those gaps between the home hardening and the road network. What we're seeing here is the conditional flame length. This is just the way we look at fire hazard, the potential for small or large flames. So as, as the color coding on the base map gets more, goes from green to orange, you're getting flame lengths up into the 18, 20-foot length, which essentially equals a crown fire. When you get down into the dark green, these are ground-level fires. And so the, it's kind of hard to see what the treatments laid over it, but the treatments really are targeting areas with greater flame length potentials. And so that's what we want, we want it to do. So the maps are going to get a little bit more busy here. This is basically showing all of the, the planned, active, and completed treatments that I showed you earlier, with the new treatment, landscape treatments that we modeled overlaid. And what I'm hoping to show you is that there is continuity between all of these different treatments, and that our model is plugging the hole between planned and completed treatments, and also addressing treatments that may, may need to be re-treated because they happened, you know, five or 10 years ago. And so, again, going back to, you know, where this whole presentation started, we're trying to have continuity between all the planning that has happened in this area and combine it into one cohesive strategy. I'm not going to go super into depth here, but there is another model that we used to QC all of this work. So we wanted to step out of the, sort of the paradigm of our, our suitability model and say, what is another system that uses a different set of assumptions say when we plug and say, how do we reduce wildfire risk in the WUI? And so we used Planscape. It's a tool that my company developed with the Forest Service and the University of California. And what it does is it kicks out treatments and rates them and gives you a cost estimate of those. And so these are the treatments, like I said, and I go deep into it, but one thing that was really cool about the results that we got that I'm sharing here, is that when you lay them over our treatment zones, they give you essentially a way to look at bridging the gap between some of our treatments, focusing on home hardening, or, excuse me, on defensible space, rather. So you can, you can kind of just draw loose circles around gaps between our model and the Planscape model, and target neighborhoods that you may want to emphasize, you know, treatments along roadways as a priority or defensible space. So it's, it's just another way to look at the problem, but there is quite a bit of overlap in our model, which we expected, and the Planscape model. So we'll be using this to make recommendations on which neighborhoods to prioritize for some of the roadway treatments and defensible space. And finally, so if we go all the way back to that boxy graphic I showed you about how we're organizing the way we prioritize treatments, this is the first tier of treatments that we have selected. So you have these green and brown polygons that are our first 10 recommended treatments to be done in the first 10 years. And you may recognize that there's a couple here that didn't show up in the previous one, and those are the ones I told you that we went in and hand-drew. And so in the bottom, or, excuse me, in the top blowup here, we have a treatment that we hand-drew in for the Weber Creek corridor, basically between Cold Springs and just past Highway 50. And that, the reason why the model excluded that is because it's a really steep canyon, but we saw this as a huge risk for fire to move into the Placerville City Center, the, you know, densely packed built environment, in a way that would cause quite a bit of problems, and that we wanted to prioritize it, even though treatments in that location would be very difficult. And the other one is this job bone, which kind of has this horseshoe shape. This came up in speaking with the TAC and some Mark's conversation with experts in the community. The model did not catch this area, but it was one of concern for, for a lot of experts who've spent time in these neighborhoods. And so we just went ahead and drew it in there, and it works really well, actually, to connect other treatments and, again, insulate the Placerville City Center. So we're going to pass it off here. Thank you. I know that was a lot.
All right, yeah, that was great. Thank you, Nick. I think we, well, we don't have as many maps left, but you can still see those around the room. So I think the, the takeaway message with Nick, you know, presented a lot of the projects and the treatments, you know, it's all around these fuels treatments. But we also want to sure, emphasize, too, that this, this strategy will also include other different types of wildfire mitigation projects that address the wildfire problem in the community. So while he's focused on the vegetation treatments or fuel reduction treatments and fuel breaks, there's also land use policy and planning tools, property and critical facility protection-type projects, like structure hardening, as well as defensible space maintenance, and then a whole suite of different public education and awareness-type projects we can do to address wildfire threat. So starting with like land use policy and planning, so this kind of goes back to how we use the actual blueprint of the community, the, the city of Placerville's general plan, specifically their public health and safety element. So that includes policies, as well as implementation programs around reducing wildfire risk in the community, and that's currently being updated. So that's one example of a land use policy tool. Another would be a defensible space ordinance update. And so in 2019, the, the city updated their defensible space ordinance of the county, so all the areas outside the city limits. They just updated their ordinance last year. So these are current documents, but there's always different ways to improve them, to make sure that we're continuing to incorporate current state regulations and fire safe code and state fire regulation requirements in the local policy. Again, that's just to make sure they're kind of consistent with each other, but also it's just a reminder to our policy leaders and decision-makers that, you know, these are some of the requirements, and the city is concerned on as far as enforcing and, you know, implementing those different zoning and ordinance tools. Then I think we've really talked about the value, and Nick kind of showed and displayed the value of property and critical facility protection, and that kind of starts with the property owner, and making sure that you all understand through public education activities and programs, the, the need and importance of just doing that defensible space clearance within that first 100 feet of your structure or building or facilities on your property. And then second to that would be actually hardening your home, and I think this was something that's coming out with lessons learned and what we're learning from not only the recent wildfires here, but what happened a couple of weeks ago in Los Angeles, that it really kind of, there's a very big importance of making sure that some of the materials that we're using when we're doing retrofits, or even if we don't have a retrofit or we're changing anything in our home, it's really important to make sure those materials are ignition resistant. So that's really what home hardening is referring to. And these are just the different projects, example types that we'll include in our action plan or mitigation strategy. So next, I want to talk about how the strategy is organized. So next, I want to talk about how the strategy is organized and structured. So I'm assuming a few of you have looked at some of these first chapters, we've been slowly kind of going in and presenting different components of these chapters as we've developed the plan. So chapters you see here now in bold text are drafted and ready for public and also City of Placer Council input. So we have an introduction chapter that's really kind of what I covered in the first few slides, the purpose, the importance of this plan and the strategy, what are some of the benefits of this strategy, and, you know, what the whole planning process looked like is covered in the planning process chapter. And there's a whole chapter in here on your community, and this is, this is important, I just want to point out, since we didn't actually, in the interest of time and not boring you with more maps, go through all this, but the profile kind of gets in a little bit more around where are some of the sensitive communities within the Placerville study area based on census tract information. So like, where are the higher concentrations on our, you know, of our seniors, or where are their youngest children located, or where are their high concentrations of low-income neighborhoods, or areas where, you know, based on census tract data, you know, folks in the community may lack access to a vehicle, so that may limit their ability to get in and out of neighborhoods, you know, during wildfire evacuation warnings or situations. So there's additional maps, and one of the things that's nice to look at that, and I wanted to point that out, is you can kind of see also where the treatments that Nick explained may line up with, you know, where more of our sensitive populations reside within the study area. The existing conditions section goes through a lot of some of the wildland urban interface and wildfire risk maps that Nick kind of incorporated and hit on in the model that he just went over through, so like vegetation, land classification zones, where there's high fuel load slope and so on. So that includes all the existing conditions, and this, this information's been very heavily studied and modeled and assessed in other plans, so again, this was very much built off of and streamlined and focused based on these other studies that have already been completed that I've mentioned. And then the wildfire risk assessment actually going to go through that risk. So the risk assessment parts really on what's that risk to our homes, our structures, the things we care about in Placerville, as well as our historic and cultural resources and some of our natural resources. Chapter six includes a list of the different potential mitigation strategies specific to wildfire, so that was that previous slide I just went through with the land use tools, property protection type projects, fuel treatment, vegetation treatment projects, and then education and outreach programs. All of that's then included in action plan, there's always an action plan of all this, this is kind of like, I'd say, the heart of the plan, where all of our decision-makers, Mark, as well as our other staff leaders and representatives at the county and city can go to and actually have an outline of how we're going to actually carry out these projects over time. So it assigns the projects, you know, a responsible agency, a partner, a timeline for completion, the funding mechanisms or grants out there that are available to address or fund the project, as well as the actual cost, and then ultimately like the priority, so it helps, you know, our staff and team figure out what projects to do first, and those to put on hold for future funding in the future. So all these different projects have been integrated in the action plan. We're also still trying to make sure we get all the different projects too that are included in the Community Welfare Protection Plan, Action Plan section and chapter, as well as all the different projects that came out of the Greater Placerville Study, for example, and some of the implementation programs in the county's safety element update, as well as any that may be in the current forthcoming safety element update that the city's doing. So that's the action plan. One of the unique pieces that's in Chapter eight will be a treatment benefit modeling section, so this is just going to model the benefits of the top four or five treatment scenarios, it's really specific to explaining what some of those carbon sequestration and greenhouse gas reduction potentials associated, would be associated with these different treatments across the landscape. And that's something that's unique, again, to this plan, that you wouldn't find that in a community wildfire protection plan, and that's to kind of align it with the state's plan and the regional capacity and forestry plan that is tied to the grant funded, that grant that funded this particular project from this year Nevada Conservancy. And lastly, we have an implementation plan that's going to complement the action plan, and that's how the city and the RCD and other stakeholders will review and assess the success of this plan over time, and then it's also going to outline a game plan of how often we may want to update this plan moving into the future. So here's a little bit more about what's covered in the action plan. Again, this will be where you go to see more about the different strategies we've considered, what that action plan looks like in terms of who's responsible, the cost estimate, the funding, I've hit on this. And then this, this wheel on the right, you've probably seen this before in other meetings, and this is the fire-adapted community, we call it the wheel because it all has all these little spokes or segments that kind of make up a good fire-adapted community. And so this kind of lines up really nicely with the different wildfire mitigation project types that we address in this plan, from community engagement, you know, meetings like and workshops like we're having tonight, pre-disaster, kind of pre-wildfire actions we can take around, you know, being ready and prepared during a wildfire evacuation, setting the safety zones, getting alerts out, to the different, you know, designations that communities can do around being designated a fire-wise community, and moving on through like defensible space projects and so on. So it just kind of covers everything that we look, that we look at that went into the action plan. And then this last slide here is, is just kind of hitting on some of the sections or components of the implementation plan, which is a little bit more on who's going to be responsible for these different projects and actions, how are they going to be monitored over time? So Nick hit on a little bit that some of these treatments, for example, that just happened maybe a few years ago, eventually will need to be re-treated. So it's kind of getting at how do we monitor and make sure those treatments are effective, and when we need to actually go out and re-treat them. And then it's, this is another chapter that just also outlines how we're going to track and share all this project information with you, the city, so you kind of have transparency on what's all going on and kind of know that these projects are in the works or getting funding, or there's projects being completed on the ground and sharing information on how much has been treated and so on. And lastly, there's a section two on just sharing that information and then also making sure we continue to integrate this plan with other plans, and make sure other plans' information get further integrated into this plan in the future if we decide to do an update for it. So schedule the next steps, I'm almost done. We've had a pretty short timeframe while we started at the end of last summer or fall. We're moving towards the final strategy, making sure that's all available to you for public comment. And then we plan to start to do environmental review or review under the California Environmental Quality Act on the plan itself, to make sure it complies with obviously environmental laws and regulations. And so there's a, usually, sometimes there's a public comment opportunity at that point in time, just to make sure that, you know, you all can kind of know that it's going through that review process. And then the plan is ready for final approval and adoption. One of the things I think we wanted to stress that's important, I think, for our team and the community is, you know, this plan, like such as this, can be considered for city council adoption, and in lieu of state occurrence, Placerville Community Wildfire Protection Plan. It's also a plan that can be updated regularly, similar to a hazard mitigation plan or a safety element every five to eight years, if you so choose. So other next steps, really, I guess it's just to kind of open it up for public feedback and comments and questions right now on the wildfire treatment scenarios, on the wildfire strategies. We also would like to get input on the chapters, again, that is available on Eldorado County RCD's webpage, so all those chapters, with the exception of Chapter six, they've, most of them have already been posted, some are about to be posted. So we're ready to get some feedback on those. And then if you have any other comments you think of, you know, this evening, you can email myself, Mark, or Nick. Mark's email is listed here, but really, I'm just going to, kind of close the presentation and open up for feedback and thoughts from you all, and I just want to say, it's really just been a pleasure working on this project within this community, special place to me. Obviously, I live up the hill, but we always go in and out of Placerville, so happy to be here, and at this point, just welcome any questions or comments or thoughts from you all in the audience here, as well as city council up there. Thank you.
We will be taking public comment here presently. I have a question. So you talk about plan integration and great. There's disparate plans, you describe them very well. My question is, can, can there be, or even should there be, because you could make a compelling argument that you might not want this, should there be a master plan, like an overarching thing that sort of knits the disparate pieces together? Or is that what this is supposed to do? Because this seems like a part of a plan. Go ahead.
I would call this kind of the, for wildfire strategies and resilience efforts within the Placerville community, that this would be like the master plan.
I got that part.
It tended to be like that overarching plan to go, go to if you want to figure out what project, you know, you should do.
Should there be, but should there be an aggregation of all of it beyond our, beyond the study area that you have? You know, there's the Forest Service, there's BLM, there's all these various, there were things around the periphery.
Oh, so that would, and then that would be the county's wildfire protection plan.
And that's their thing?
Yes, and that's why, you know, we've talked a lot about plan integration, and it was very specific to, these efforts were actually happening and still are happening concurrently.
Right.
So we wanted to make sure there wasn't like a duplication of efforts and overlap, that they were in sync with each other and consistent, and so we're still getting through the final phases of that in terms of looking at the actions that actually go into this, and then figuring out of those, you know, what may be prioritized. And that's also why we want to hear from folks too on, you know, how to maybe rank or weight some of those projects, you know, high or medium or low.
So if you looked at the county's plan, this would be embedded in the county's plan?
No, you, you can go ahead if you-
We got some of the preliminary treatment polygons, and they're actually included in our planned and completed treatment map. So we're already aligning this with theirs, and they are complementary, and I imagine when they see our plan, they will integrate it.
Yeah, we've shared our treatment areas. Some of this is all pretty new, but we've shared like all the existing planned and proposed treatment areas that we compiled with the county, and they've shared that same kind of data set with us, so those are, those are in sync. One of the other ways they can be the same is actually in that action plan part, because there's a corresponding and similar chapter in a CWPP, it's called an action plan too, or their strategy. And so all the projects that they have that are pertaining to, I forget how they call it, the unit that covers our Placerville project study area, can be integrated in our plan, and we've actually gone through and done that already, and then any of those projects we include in our study area that can actually, there's still, I hope, a chance to include those in their plans and vice versa, and so that's kind of another step of integrating the plans.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you. Any other questions, comments, questions, comments? All right, do we have a way to? We got one of the mics, okay, great. Are we just going to move it around out there? Great, okay, let's open it up to folks. If you have a question, raise your hand, we will get to everybody, so, thank you. Do you have a ballpark cost?
For all of this, for the treatments?
That's, that's a good question, so that's part of, some of those costs have been addressed as part of one of the slides Nick showed, it was in Planscape, will come up with a cost of some of those treatment polygons he was showing. And I, we also, one of the reasons why Wildlife Services Group is on our team is, this is what they do. So in the back is Chris, and one of the other gentlemen that's been in our meetings is Joel Holland, they actually do fuels treatment all around Northern California and various projects, so they're kind of, we're out in the field, when we went out a few different times, to kind of look at these sites and help us build some of the cost estimates that will be specific to at least the top 10 or 12 treatment areas. And Nick, you can add anything I'm missing here.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, so the priority first tier treatment, the last slide you showed, you, well, our services group, they have a whole, they have a lot of these things, and it's hard. Now, I tell you to actually draw the final polygon if you're doing the treatment, it's hard to do that, it's very active. There's a ballpark of education, flow, and everything, you need to get a range of, you know, that would be part of the final, of that, of the, of the, of the, of the environment and, 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 that is something that we're, we're-
And I just want to add to that, a lot of people want to jump to a project cost really quick, but before you get actually to the point where you put, you know, boots on the ground, where you actually hire these guys, and you pay them X number of dollars per acre, there's an investment that goes into that. So this project has been built with the, with the integration with this California State Fire Plan, the Regional Forest and Fire Capacity Program, every element that you saw presented tonight has a reason why it's being addressed, because there's boxes that we have to check on every grant application and every form that we file to show that we have plan integration and justification for going to one place over another, and what the risk assessment shows, what the vulnerability of the communities are, and what prioritization processes are being taken place, and how you're building community awareness and decision-making processes that are not just a single entity banking those decisions. So the investment of time that the community is going to have to make to help us prioritize the location of these projects, understanding the scale of these projects, and understanding the scope, is really going to have to be invested in before we actually ever apply for a grant to get this done. This project was funded through the Sierra Nevada Conservancy, and it will give us the opportunity to gain access to critical funding that others don't have because we're doing this plan. That funding source in the governor's budget is the Regional Forest and Fire Capacity Program, and there's currently about $50 million in there that's only going to about 12 or 15 eligible entities, of which the Eldorado RCD is one of those eligible entities, and we did this plan, so we're going to have access to that money if we can demonstrate that we have a good plan, we have plan integration, our technical advisory committee supports what we're doing, and we have feasibility in the implementation of the projects we're going to ask for money to do. Because we aren't going to write a grant that we don't have access to land, first, this is a 100% voluntary program, we have to ask for your permission to do this work on your property, right? It will also be undertaken on public land with the Forest Service and BLM, state parks, city, county, but it's your project, so we're going to have to have investments. So that's a numerical value that's hard to estimate. Once we do have a project and you have a roadside treatment, well, roadside is going to be a different cost than a home hardened, or a defensible space project, that's a different cost. We may have a shaded fuel break where we go out and treat oak woodland, that's a different cost than a mixed conifer type stand. So, you know, there's ranges in there, and we're going to bring all that information to you when we talk about specific projects, we want to come to your community, we want to have this plan evolve into discussions at the local neighborhood level, so we can start talking about those. But ultimately, if you want to know about per acre cost, like what these guys are going to want to know, we're generally talking about, was it 800 to $1,000 per acre, guys? No. No, it's like, you know, for us, because we have a large economy, we, it's about 1,300 to $2,000 an acre for treatments, not counting management. And I will say that the costs, we are investing in doing, every single project that's listed on here is going to undergo through a SEQA analysis, and we're going to file a SEQA document so that we are quote-unquote shovel-ready, so when we apply for projects, we've already gone through the environmental analysis, and we can check the box that we say that we have completed SEQA for these projects as well. Yeah, and we, again, we're not isolated, we're not doing things on our own. We just submitted a grant application for $7 million to CAL FIRE, it's part of the Fire Adapted 50 Strategy from Placerville all the way to Fresh Pond. We're working with CAL Trans, EID, SMUD, PG&E, the Forest Service, and many other landowners who've already signed up, so we've already got an investment of time, and we're leveraging other resources so that others can contribute to the costs, where CAL Trans can match what we're going to be doing along Highway 50, or others can match and bring in other resources. So this is a project that's going to leverage resources as well, not just be grant-dependent. We can't be grant-dependent to achieve success on this.
Thank you. My name is Mike Thomas, and if I understand this correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're targeting 80,000 acres? Is that what we're targeting?
That's the study area, so we are targeting where within those 80,000 acres?
Yeah, and then, and then there's four specific areas.
Yeah, so Nick looked at it like- Yeah, so Nick looked at it like in his analysis of three different treatment areas, the city center, the WUI, the Wild and Urban Interface, and the periphery.
How are you planning to contact the property owners in those four areas?
That's a good question, and I'll pass that one to Mark, because this is something, Mark, this is part of his job description, but it is complicated.
So our technical advisory committee, if you look at all of these projects, they're ranked right now 1 through 20 or something like that, they're not prioritized. One of the things that we'd want the city to do is, and the technical advisory committee to do, is establish a set of criteria that will help us prioritize where we want to focus in obtaining funding to implement projects, you know. And it could, they could say, we want you to do all the areas where they have one-way-in, one-way-out roads. And let's say that's the example that they established. We say, okay, what we do is we map out all the property owners in there. We identify them, we send them a mailing, we invite them to our office, we do a presentation, we'd say, this is what we'd like to do, would you want to participate? And let's say that everybody right over here said, yes, I want to participate, and everybody over here said, no, 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 but then everybody over here said, yes. Well then, we're going to design a project that does all of this, and we're going to say, sorry folks, we can't checkerboard this, but until you get your neighbors over here to participate, you're out. So we have to have logistics, feasibility, and cost effectiveness in these projects. So, and, and again, this is, this is your, everyone who's participating, they have to adopt the same management plan. We can't do something on your property and then do something on yours, and do something different on yours. It has to match and meet the goals or the objectives of modifying fire behavior sufficient enough to protect your, sufficient enough to help protect your home and allow people to get in and for you to get out. Does that answer your question? Okay, cool, thank you.
Hi, my name's Jordan Kennedy, and I live in the Point View Drive area, and also the Smith Flat area is kind of a concern. These are nice plans, but I'm just wondering about, could there be bullet points? I want to know how these plans work with PG&E and their tree trimmers who have come in our neighborhood, and once they even brought the masticater, which scared me to death, and they're just taking down trees. And, and they take them down, and then they just leave them on the bank that goes down to Smith Flat. And they're there, and there's a lot of fire fuel there, and they don't make any attempt to do anything. Sometimes they even need the branches and the smaller tree parts, and that, to me, is a real fire hazard. And the other thing is, they're just careless about what trees they take down. They just come on the property, take the tree, they claim that, oh, well, it's within four feet, and the next guy you talk to says, well, you need 12 feet, and then you need, and, and so you talk to one person, then another, then another and another, and you get different answers. Meanwhile, the tree, the fire fuel is still there on there, they're still taking out trees, and there's no accounting for the mitigation. They never offered to plant a new tree there. There's no concern for the animal habitat, habitat, there's no concern for the air quality. I mean, these trees do produce oxygen, and we like them, and they produce shade, so. And, so I'm just upset about, I don't see that you'll be working with PG&E and the tree trimmers to see that, that some of this fuel is not provided. And, and the other thing is, I, I live in, this is a one-way-in, one-way-out neighborhood, and what I would like to be able to do is to have a bullet point plan of what do you do when you evacuate? And be able to present it at maybe National Night Out, or have somebody come and speak to. Okay, here's what you do. If you live here, this is the direction you go. If you live here, this is the direction you go. And maybe, you know, the thing to, what do you do when you evacuate? What do you need to take? And to be aware of it. And, there was one other thing I can't think of now. Anyway, I would like to be able to see some action now.
Okay, so the, one of the things the plan does not do, and she mentioned mitigating the work that PG&E is doing, one of the work that this strategy is not doing to do is supplement or take over any jurisdictional authority or responsibility of another organization, whether it be a utility corridor, a road, or whatever, you know, responsibility another organization has, this won't take that over. One of the things we have done, though, is where we do have intermix or overlap of certain areas, we can cooperate, and again, like we said earlier, where PG&E maybe has fallen trees and left them, we may be able to come in there and remove them and process them and make it, and achieve really more of that desired condition. So we do want to complement that and help the community out in the long term. We don't see any problem with that integration, me doing things smarter. The other, the other point was, oh, yeah, there's different treatment scenarios for different areas. You know, everybody and everything has had a hard enough time with not only fires, but growth. You know, I mean, shoot, I, I, you know, I live right on Weber Creek, you know, I love it that there's a lot of ecological value, you know. Our goals are to be resilient but productive ecologically, hydrologically, you name it. We want to have productive landscapes, that's part of being resilient. So we do have the design criteria and prescriptions that hopefully help and increase the productivity of the ecological function of these, of these watersheds. Because you can't attain true resiliency unless you have that balance of, you know, and it's different. When you're up against the house, your five-foot zone, you're going to have, you know, pretty much zero combustibility. You go out 30 feet, you go for, you go out 100 feet. When you go out 3,000 feet, you're not going to have the same prescription. So we take that into account. We have professional environmentalists and foresters helping us with our prescriptions, and we try to, again, we're working on your property, so nothing's going to go on without your permission, so.
Hello, DJ McArgy, Pollock Pines resident, but I live right on the Plasterville border, right there off of Sly Park Road. When we're talking about prioritizing projects, who are the subject matter experts? Are you asking the USFS Battalion Chiefs, the Eldorado County Battalion Chiefs, the CAL FIRE Battalion Chiefs, on their thoughts of what the priority is of where we need to implement these projects?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question, because it depends on who you ask, their priority is their priority, right? So right now, it's our technical advisory committee, and that technical advisory committee is made up of local, you know, fire department personnel, we have other resource professionals from Forest Service, CAL FIRE, from the county. We would love to have the city let us know what their level of, you know, engagement with the technical advisory committee is. We currently have city staff on our technical advisory committee. So, right, so they've been working on the plan itself. We're yet to develop the criteria for establishing priorities, but that's going to be our next phase. But our current technical advisory committee is the one who's going to be establishing that criteria, and they're listed in the plan itself. But I hear you, I hear what you're saying, and I'm not answering it, but I know what you're saying.
Hi, Mark, Angie Karochi here. I came really on behalf of the Realtor group in this area, but on further knowledge here, if I personally am a large landowner in some of these high areas of need, who would we connect with to get our neighborhood essentially in a better position to be moving forward with you guys in the future, both as a private landowner and as a head of a neighborhood?
So, the Fire Safe Council is a great organization to work with. The RCD is always here for any individual landowners, and we can, we can come out and provide conservation technical assistance. If you're a large landowner over 10 acres or more, we can always develop a forest management plan for you and get you into cost share programs through CAL FIRE's California Forestry Incentive Program, or through the Natural Resource Conservation Services Environmental Quality Incentive Program. Those are cost share programs for you to enroll in, implement the forest management plan on your own, hire your own contractors, and get reimbursed for that work that you do. Many of our contractors here do that work all the time. So there's other ways that you can get assistance for implementing and addressing the goals on your property. As a, that's individually. As a community, we can help, you know, definitely, when it comes down to prioritization. If we know that the feasibility of implementing a project is high in that area, then that's going to weigh heavily in the criteria. Yep, and me or Courtney, and her information's in the back, too.
Thank you. The elephant in the room, funding. The $50 million that you talked about, is that still secure? Is that money that's still there, or has the government put a hold on that?
It's state money, so it's still secure. But like I said, there's people who are going through the process to get these plans done to apply for that money, and as soon as they apply for that money, then it's going to be put out. So we're hoping that we're going to get this submitted, get our plans through SEQA, and submit a list of projects that we would like to see funded. So we're going to go through this prioritization process relatively quick, because we want to put together a project bundle. There's a lot of projects in Eldorado County beyond just what's going on in Plasterville. There's Caldor Recovery, there's the Crystal Basin, Healthy Eldorado Landscape Partnership, there's a lot of different, there's the CWPP that's going to be done, and there's going to be a lot of projects listed in that, in that project, or in that plan. So I think that we've done a really, really good job with integrating with other plans, building a really good strategy here. We want to get it vetted through the city council, get it vetted through you, and then over the course of the next two months or so, three months, come up with a priority list of projects, and I would say that would equate to be around $10 million to start, and then hopefully we get it.
The gentleman in the green thing has been, had his hand up forever. Thank you. And then I have a question.
Just a quick question before I ask my question. Are EID and PG&E on the Tactical Advisory Committee? Okay.
Yes, they are.
If they're on the committee, and you don't want to get crossways with their, your language is what? You don't want to interfere with their?
Yeah, their responsibilities, yeah.
Yeah, their responsibilities. So they're advising about what you guys want it, should do, but you can't get them involved in asking what they should be doing.
So, there, we are, we are working with them really closely. For example, some of the water distribution systems, you know, they may not have, they may, they might have very high interest in protecting the fuels adjacent to that infrastructure, but they don't have the legal responsibility to do so, because they don't own the land, right? So what we'll do is, we'll design a project that identifies the critical infrastructure, identifies, and that's a prioritization element, and then looks at the environmental compliance, is NEPA done, is environmental done? Do we have access to the land? If it is, then that's another element that would get us access to that area or prioritize that unit. And then, and then work on that. Texas Hill, there's an area right over there. That's an area, we're doing so much work around Texas Hill, there's an EID landholding right there. We would love to get in there and work on that property. They're actually going to be initiating the SEQA on that, so that we do have access to that land. We know that that goes right near Camp Naboo. You know, there's a lot of other elements around that area. EID is very critical. Are they responsible? Sure they are, but they don't have the resource to do it, so that's where we can come in and help them. Oh, yes. Um, so, he was saying, what's our, what do we do if another organization isn't fulfilling their responsibilities to maintain or protect their assets? The community assets, right. So our plan does not address integrity of fire hydrants or anything like that, you know. We don't do any of that. As far as land management responsibilities, we also don't, you know, get involved with that. There's a lot of people who are saying, hey, I live next to BLM. What can we do to get them to maintain, you know, clearance on my property line? We don't have any enforcement power, we don't have any authority to do that, but if they give us access and we do have funding, then we can go in there. Not really. Not, anything that's beyond what the risk assessment or anything says. I think we all know what those are, without having us point them out, you know.
They, they should also just add on to that, EID, I didn't work on this, but I know that they have their own local hazard mitigation plan that will have a bunch of different projects that should be similar to what we've been talking about today in there, you know, and that's, that plan that they put in place is there for the same reason that we're pitching and proposing this plan, and, you know, the value of all the other plans we're talking about, because that's going to enable them to be eligible for different pots of federal funding, specifically under Federal Emergency Management Agency, so they can do something to protect, you know, their water conveyance system and so on, and other facilities. So, you know, these projects are supposed to, because I know they were going to be participating jurisdiction with the county's hazard mitigation plan, and they kind of did their own, because I think that they were, they have grant funding for certain projects to do what you're talking about, specifically probably fuels reduction. Yeah, you can go ahead.
Can we, can we get a microphone, please? Thank you very much, thank you.
I'm associated with the Eldorado County Fire Safe Council, and they had a presentation where EID has a five-year plan to hit every fire hydrant once every five years. So if you haven't had anything like that, EID is very responsive, and I would say just contact them directly, and they're very good. So don't assume that it's been forgotten.
The irrigation ditches that are no longer in use, have they spoken to the clearance of all the? Well, just to make the point, a lot of the unused EID ditches are full of refuse and burnable fuel.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Gina Posey, I do a lot of work in my firewise community, and I spend a lot of time on this issue. I have two questions. The first one is firewise communities, they, it would seem that they should have some priority in some way to finish work within those communities, just because they have a lot of folks that are already doing a lot of defensible space, and a lot of times we will have issues with trees, for example, that is just too costly to try to remove. And so I'd like to know if there's any program that specifically tries to help firewise communities finish the work, because they've already done a lot of it already. And the second question, I'm going to bring up the elephant in the room, which is insurance. Sorry. So, this is great work, I'm thrilled to see all that you're doing. Now let's go to the ideal world, you got the funding, you did all this work. Will any of this work influence the variety of fire maps that are used to determine insurance rates?
Well, as far as firewise goes, that's another element of prioritization. We would think that, you know, I know they've raised the standard on firewise, what is being a firewise community? A lot better than what it used to be, before, you know, Caldor, Grizzly. But yeah, we want to help neighborhoods maintain, we also want to help those achieve. So there's a balancing point there. It's a, it's a, it's an approach to a multi-beneficial outcomes analysis, and that's why there's so many different types of projects being presented. As far as the insurance goes, I know we've got a couple representatives from the county. I know, Tom, you don't want me to throw your tanya, but we also have representatives from our own Fire Safe Council community that, Bruce, did you want to chime in on that? Or? Or the city council, I'm sorry, I didn't want to open it up unless...
Missed that part. What did you just say?
There was a question about insurance.
No, yeah. Honestly, no. I mean, no. I mean, insurance is a big deal. Everybody, I'm sure we're all, not all of us necessarily, but fair plan, you know, but, but, that's a whole nother topic for a different day. Let's just focus on veg management and kind of go down that road first. I have a question. You know, you asked us to prioritize things. Well, you know, Placerville is six and a half square miles. I mean, so, quite honestly, prioritizing for us might be fairly quick, you know. We can, we, you know, it's an easy map to go to. But it seems to me, because your four scenarios, all those fires start somewhere else. They start outside this jurisdiction. And, and then if the wind's blowing in the wrong direction, they come into the jurisdiction. It seems to me, for this to make sense, is that we would have to have alignment with the county, who is all around us, on their prioritizations. And then, because we could prioritize all sorts of things, but if they're not prioritizing the things just outside our boundary in favor of someplace else, and it might make total sense, by the way, well, then we're kind of screwed, because the fires, you know, a fire could start inside the city, and let's not get away from that. But in your scenarios, the really bad ones, they all start in these canyons somewhere outside, Chili Bar, South Fork, you know, pick your, pick your watershed. And then they come into the city, because the wind's blowing in the wrong way. And, you know, so, the prioritization, I'm curious about that part of it. You know, I guess what I'm curious about is, if you, if any jurisdiction, whether it's us, EID, who, you know, take your, take your agency, they prioritize something, but then around them, the folks that are around them, that have that responsibility, don't prioritize things. What happens when you have a conflict in prioritization? Because to me, I could prior, you know, we could sit down and have a cup of coffee and probably figure out our priorities fairly quickly, because it's not a very big space. But really, we need to work in union with the county, which is a whole different animal. So, what happens when that doesn't happen? Oh, my city manager has it.
Mark, can I just jump in quickly? But, as I understand it, and maybe this is what you would say, is our priority may not be something within our little boundary. It may be Weber Creek. It may be outside of where we're at. Our priority doesn't necessarily have to be within our city limits. Is that correct? Because I agree with you. We need to look at those projects, and many of those projects, I think, that will be priorities in here that make the most sense in terms of benefit, will probably not be within our city limits specifically.
Yeah. We've seen the best results when people have aligned their strategic priorities together and made sacrifices from what they may have individually identified as a priority, to really accept what a larger sort of accomplishment can achieve, because either, one, there's money that people want to put into the system. That re-prioritizes everything really quickly. That's what happened in Camino. And we got 8,000 acres there, because they said, I want a defensible wildfire zone here now. And leadership took that on, and we did 8,000 acres. And all of a sudden, SPI, EID, Forest Service, they all prioritized because of the investments that were being made. And we were able to treat a lot of acreage there. We went with the city of Placerville area, because we didn't see a plan that was sufficient enough to leverage the resources or align the priorities of other agencies enough to make a difference. And we're hoping that this plan catches the attention, raises the awareness of the people who live in and around Placerville, and the people who are responsible for protecting the critical assets within and around the area, including Caltrans, PG&E, SMUD. We have the huge opportunity that hasn't been there before to align the prioritize, to align the priorities and leverage the funding for Placerville, because I haven't seen of any of those plans that we presented, something that was very specific to Placerville. And that's what we were trying to do.
Yeah, I understand that part. I got it. I'm just like, I mean, we don't, we can advise, we can advise outside of the jurisdiction of the city, but, you know, our Jedi powers end at the boundary of the city. I mean, that's just the cold reality of place where we live. And so, I mean, it seems to, well, then we need to be sitting down, and we, somehow or another, we need to be articulating this with the various jurisdictions around us, most of which is county. I mean, county owns most of what's around Placerville, I'm assuming. And so, and sitting down with them, because they, they're the group that needs to prioritize, more than us, actually, from what you're saying.
And what's really cool is that the RCD, we don't own property. We're non-enforcement, non-regulatory. We have no authority over anyone, over entity, over anything, yet we, we put thousands of acres on the ground, because we cross jurisdictional boundaries. We can accept and manage funds from any sources. We can help people achieve their priorities. And so, this framework that we're trying to build of sharing resources, partnering with people to help landowners achieve their goals and the municipal goals, is, I think, the opportunity that we're also building into this framework.
Okay. I had another question, but I forgot it. It's fine.
Hi, I'm Sandy Ralph, and this might be kind of a silly question. We live on Harmony Hill Road off of Newtown, and I need to know kind of an explanation on one-way-in, one-way-out, and how that is a priority, because with Harmony Hill, we're privately maintained road, and it's a one-lane, neighbor-shared kind of a thing. And when we turn around and go back to Newtown Road, we cannot turn left. We only can turn right. And I can say, I was freaked out and crying during the pay fire, because we worried about if we had to evacuate, one, we would have to be going to the left, but Harmony Hill, which we pay dues to maintain, connects to Green Canyon, which is kind of a crappy road. And I get confused if I have to take that one to get out, and I always end up going into someone's driveway. What kind of priority is that for those kind of neighborhoods, that if we had to leave, we would have to go to the left, but we can't go to the left, so we would have to go to the right, make a U-turn at Fort Jim? And there was that other fire that that homeless lady started that was at that area. So, even if we had to evacuate for that one, we couldn't have gone out that way, made the U-turn, because that road was closed. What happens to our kinds of neighborhoods?
All right. Luke Shepherd, El Dorado County Fire. So, the first part of your question is how are, like, kind of what qualifies a one-way-in, one-way-out community? Okay? And so, the State Fire Marshal's Office, a number of years back, three or four, said any area that has 30 or more dwelling units in a single way in or out is, then, that's the kind of the helicopter view of one-way-in, one-way-out. I will say, and I'm going to steal a line from my boss here, Chief Cordero, had a really insightful kind of thought about one-way-in, one-way-out communities. Just because you, you happen to live in one of those 30 or more dwelling unit, you know, neighborhoods that has one way in, one way out, it doesn't mean you're doomed. And it also means that if you're not on those, that you're not necessarily sitting pretty. There are absolutely areas that have, you know, 30 or more dwelling units, one way in, one way out. Coloma Court comes to mind, right behind El Dorado High School, off 49 North. They're not a huge risk in my mind, because of the nature of their road, the distance, things like that, okay? But areas like Oak Hill, or Stark's Grade, or Harmony Hill, much more concerned, just because of the nature of the topography, the access, the fuel modeling, you know, things like that. So, I wouldn't get super caught up in the one-way-in, one-way-out. It is a factor, and some of those, those neighborhoods meet a criteria amongst others that are going to raise that prioritization concern. But it's, it's a little bit of a misnomer, and so, don't think that you're good or bad necessarily, just because of that designation, if that makes sense. There's a lot of factors that go into how we evaluate that risk and those hazards. Second part of your question, what do you do? Right, like, practically speaking, like, okay, I've been designated, or I haven't, but I still have an access egress problem. A handful of things go into that. One, being signed up for the alerts and knowing your area, right? Driving those evacuation routes, making sure that they're clear. If somebody's put up a gate, or it's washed out, being aware of that ahead of the time is huge, as silly as that sounds. Know your area, know where those, those alternative routes are or are not, and the condition that they're in. Having a early notification is going to be beneficial to both you to get out, so that we're not going headlight to headlight as we're trying to come in, right? So, that early notification, early evacuation is a huge component of that, being ready to go, having a plan, having practiced or rehearsed that plan during non-stressful times, right? Game day is not the day to prepare for, for that event. So, those are some things that you can do if, in the instance, you get stuck, and your only option is to shelter in place. Having done the work beforehand, to have that defensible space and those home hardening, you know, tasks completed is a phenomenal value, because crews are coming in there, right? If we have known rescues, or we know we have structures threatened, that is a priority for us tact, as far as tactics. And ensuring that fire apparatus can get in, that your home is defendable, or that we can affect evacuation or a rescue, or suppress that fire, or allow it to bump around your structure, is another thing that you can do. And I get it, it is not ideal, but that's the, the idea of doing the best you can with what you've got, and having those things preset or pre-planned, and having worked on them beforehand, is, that's a whole lot of bang for your buck. Does that answer your questions? Okay, thank you.
But he's looking at me. All right, if there are no more questions, thank you very mu, thank you very much. Those are very good, very well-considered thoughts there. You folks can wrap it up, and then I get to gavel us out. Well, I don't have a gavel. I have to use my hand. We already saw this. It was impressive, actually. If any final comments?
I just wanted to say thank you for everybody's time for being here. In some way, we've already started this wildfire resilience strategy with the work we're doing in Texas Hill. You know, that's a community that was really engaged early on, and we developed a plan similar to this, but a smaller scale, and we've been able to achieve a lot of implementation. Our contractors are right back there, who've done a lot of the work. So, if you ever want to have a demonstration site, go out and look at some of the work that we're doing. We'll be more than happy to take you out there and show you some of the work that we've done. And I just wanted to say thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank all of you for coming. And I think that's it, so we are done. Go home. There we go.